You don't have to wear jewelry. We wore it all the time, let's not say we're on the chair with the table. Sit on the chair.
So before they kind of bounce change for a seat.
They did the six years.
Really?
Oh, really? Was it like a holiday? Did it last for a forever?
Did I just walk up and you?
You or you driving the office?
It's like, okay.
Good. Rollin'.
Let me read this to the flag of the United States of America. To your public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at seven oh three, we will bring the city council meeting for January fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two. The meeting. Call of order and roll call, all of the council members are here, including the mayor. We also have our city attorney, our city engineer, and our city administrator, Al Frazza. So we will move on. Consent agenda. Or I mean adopt agenda, I'm sorry about that.
So one item to add under old business, that'd be the Kenyon Bar and Grill charitable gambling license.
That's going under old?
Yep. So that won't be the part of the minutes.
For that, I will move the amended agenda. Okay, there's been a motion made.
Second.
Second. Motion has been made in second to adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye's passed. Okay, then the consent agenda. Anything on that? Okay, motion on that.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made, second to adopt the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's passed, okay. Under approval of the minutes from last time, what the change? You know, we did forget one of the consent citizens comments, but I just don't believe there was anybody here. Sorry about that. Jump ahead. So on approval of the minutes, the only one that we're actually gonna change.
They're gonna do anyone that's supposed to.
Just let it go, okay? That's part of it, okay? Then we'll do presentations, public hearings, recognition, pro forma motions. That I'm aware of. We'll move right along now. We'll get into engineering. City engineer, what, are you ready?
I am.
Okay.
Proceed.
Good evening.
I got it. Where we going?
New year, same thing. All right. Yeah, okay, all right. Good evening, council, happy new year, first time had a chance to see you since the holidays, so hope you all had a good new year, and it's good to be back if you came here in two thousand twenty. With me tonight is Derek Hollinger, you've gotten to know Derek over the last several meetings as we've been working on the projects, so Derek will be here helping with some of the updates on the things that we've got going on in the city. Per your agenda, the first update is Red Wing Avenue. This is a fairly quick update, as you know, we're currently working on the final design for the construction plan and specifications. Those are about seventy-five percent complete at this point. The intent is to have them complete and ready for your consideration at the February meeting. Between now and then, we are going to have one more public meeting, and that public meeting is a week from Thursday, so that will be January twenty-third in the evening here at City Hall. Where it'll be more like an open house style format, where we'll have the plans, we'll have information, and remember, the public can come in and ask questions, and ask about how the plans affect their property, or access, or those types of things, and then we'll take any feedback, and we'll incorporate anything that's necessary to the final plan that come back to you then in February. And the intent then is, February, we'll be ready for you to consider approval of the plans, and if you choose to approve them, then we'll be set to advertise those and go off for competitive bids for construction. So that's really, Derek, anything else on Red Wing to note?
Yeah, I guess if there were any specific questions here, or you have a draft set of the plans, and I could show you anything if you're interested.
All right, well, we got it, there's no questions on Red Wing. Next project to update you on is the Second Street Sanitary Sewer Improvements. As you know, the construction on this project was essentially complete. There was an issue that we had briefly discussed with council last month about liquidated damages, and as we had talked about in the, we had calculated the theoretical maximum amount of damages that could be withheld on the contract. And since that time, we have discussed with city staff and the contract, and we've reached consensus on what we think the recommended appropriate amount of damages is. We've prepared a letter to that effect, a copy of it's in your packet tonight, it's dated January eighth. Essentially lays out the, and identifies the exact amount of liquidated damages, which are proposed at nineteen thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars and fifty cents. The contractor has agreed with this, he signed up on the letter, I think you guys have the current version of the updated original letter with his signature. So one of the actions tonight would be, what, if you approve the final pay request, you would be approving these liquidated damages, so then the mayor and administrator would be authorized to sign this letter, so that the city would have a copy, and the contractor would have a copy, and we would have a copy, so everyone has written documentation of what the final agree upon liquidated damages are. Other than that, we did prepare the final pay request, and that's also in your packet. The final pay request, it releases all of the retainage, which is standard money that we hold until they get all the punchless items and all the loose ends tied up. So that's all been addressed, the retainage has been released, but of course, we are deducting those liquidated damages from the final amounts due to the contractor. And so the net pay request, on the final pay request number five, payment would be seventeen thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Because this is the final pay request, we do have to get the appropriate tax withholding forms and things like that from the contractor, so that we have all those proper paperwork in place for the state of Minnesota. Derek, have we received all of those yet, are they still in process?
No, so if you choose to approve this tonight, I just recommend that you approve it contingent of the final project.
Yep. So really, the action that is up for your consideration tonight on the Second Street project would be the consideration of the final pay request. And the final pay request, as I mentioned, would close out the construction contract, it would include those liquidated damages in the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred eighteen thousand, fifty cents, which would result in a final payment due to the contractor of seventeen thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. And again, if you do choose to approve the pay request, we would just recommend you make a contingent upon the contractor supplying his final paperwork for the tax.
And there's still hell for any damages into the future sinking?
Correct, we have two-year warranty on all of the, on all of this.
Two-year correction period, and it should be pointed out, in the letter that I sent with the final payment, there's already one warranty item that they need to address next year, so they've been officially notified for that, and that should occur next year.
And the two-year warranty starts from the date the final payment is approved. So if the final pay request is approved tonight, this would be the start of the two-year warranty, so we have warranty through January two thousand twenty-two. And as you know, that can be used, because on the First Street project from a couple of years ago, we're going to be making some warranty corrections on that in the spring, I have some settlements over there, so.
Well, looking back at it, and I've talked to Mark, and that, what was the original, was it thirty thousand or something like that? So I think this was a pretty good, pretty good compromise, myself. So, you guys think?
Yeah, I think, I mean, you can go back and haggle for a little bit here, a little bit there, at one point, or you put more time and effort into it to, you know, argue it out.
Diminishing returns.
Yeah, doing a lot of diminishing returns there, I think.
And the contractors agreed to it, so we're halfway already.
Right, we even got the signature, so.
I should point out too, just for your notification and for the record, the original contract amount, based on the contract that was awarded, was two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, one hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty cents. The final amount with this pay request and liquid damages and everything is two hundred six thousand dollars, one hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. So the project came in about nine thousand dollars under contract.
And those are dollars that can go on for other construction.
Yeah, and that also included the extra fill that was needed.
The soils corrections, yep.
So, well, if everybody's happy, I'm gonna make the motion that we accept the final pay request for seventeen thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-five, thirty-five cents, yeah.
More motion?
I'll second it with a question, are, is that contingent on them supplying all their paperwork that's necessary to the city?
Yes, that's up to you.
That's part of the motion?
Yeah, we'll make it that way.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion been made, and second, for the final pay request, number five, for seventeen thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars, thirty-five cents to rock construction. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Make the payment. Okay.
Thank you, council, we will proceed with that accordingly, we'll get the signatures of the mayor and the administrator on the documents after the meeting. Next project is an update on the Kenyon Business Park. We've been working on, as you know, on the plating documents, there's preliminary plat and the final plat that need to be prepared, so that we can officially lay out the lots and the streets and things. Along, as part of that plating documents, we have to have essentially the plans done, so the drainage plan, the utility plan, all those things are all gonna be laid out. We do have that entire package now draft, complete, and I've got them with me tonight, PDFs have been provided to the city administrator and city attorney. They were not included in the council packet tonight, because technically, they go to the planning commission before they come to the city council. So these are scheduled right now, it'll go to the planning commission next Tuesday, the twenty-first, and there'll be a public hearing at that meeting, and so the proper notifications and advertisements for that public hearing have been made, and these will be reviewed with the planning commission at that meeting, and then assuming the planning commission recommends it to move forward, then it will come back to you at your next meeting for consideration. With that, we will be ready then, if, assuming that these documents get approved, we will be ready to move into the final design for the construction project, the first phase of construction project, and we have prepared a proposal letter for that that's in your packet tonight for your consideration. Derek, I don't know if you want to review the scope of the work?
Sure, yeah, I can summarize what was included with this, so just to kind of recap, what we've been previously authorized to do was to prepare these documents that Julie just kind of went over, prepare these plating documents. So basically, what that does, from a design standpoint, or a percent complete standpoint, that creates about a thirty to forty to fifty percent complete plan set. It's not a plan set that's ready to be bidding, you don't have specifications, that type of thing, so what this proposal is intended to do is to take you from where we are right now to that next step, which would be bidding of the project, completion of the construction plan, specifications, and ready for construction. I will point out, we have one, in terms of the scope of the design work that's included in this proposal, there's one item that's still a little bit up in the air, and that's related to the power extension work that's going on out there. I've included about, I think it's about nine thousand dollars worth of fees for an electrical sub consultant that we already have on board, and they've started on the process. But in the event that there's some type of scope change with the power extension that's different than what was previously discussed with the project, then we would come back and ask for some type of adjustment, but I have included a, call it a token amount, nine thousand dollars, that I believe will cover some of the power extensions work in the project.
Do you need to find a power extension?
Electrical, electrical extensions, so they can bring power up to the site.
Very cool, or?
Well, that's part of what's up for discussion, I, what Randy had originally wanted out there was running overhead lines, and there may also be, well, getting a couple of street lights in the area, but I just don't know, we've gotta work through some details with them to figure out what exactly he wants out there, and then we'll have better, what's needed on the design side. Basically, what's up for discussion with that one right now is, if I could find a way to remove that from the plans and from this grant process, there may be an opportunity to save the city some money by maybe doing some work that can, you can use themselves, or, you know, some other type of change. Whenever we have grant dollars involved, and that's included with the contract, there's a whole bunch of requirements that come along with that funding, so if we can potentially remove it, and save the city some money, then we might think that, but we've just gotta, we've gotta pin down the scope first before we can make that switch.
And we've got more than enough work with the sewer and water and streets to do, that we can use up all the grant money on that, we don't need the electrical to, you know, to use the grant money, so. As Derek mentioned, you know, a lot of times, you get the grants, you have to pay per giving wages, and so the contractors have to make sure that they're paying the, you know, the higher wages to their employees and those types of things, and just more paperwork that comes along with the grant dollars. So if we can focus those grant dollars on the sewer, water, street work, and separate electric out, and look, can you manage that, that would be more cost effective, it's more efficient overall. And Derek, right now, the proposal is one project, that would include the utility extensions to the site, as well as the Phase One improvements within the site, so the sewer, water, sewers. All proposed is one large construction contract, that would be bid and constructed as one project. The schedule for that is, we would be ready to construct that this summer?
Yep, this summer, I'd like to put you on it, the earliest track that we could have this thing ready for bidding would be March. I would say that our biggest critical path item right now is gonna be the approval of the capital permits to the county. If that goes smoothly, and if the planning commission doesn't have any issues with this for approving the plat here next week, that would be the schedule that we're on. If we're set back another month, then you're gonna be making a change, which, it's not the end of the world, but still, early enough, you're not fighting the construction season at that point yet, but, March, April.
That's this one here, isn't it? On the permits and that.
Correct, we've gotta get county permit, we've gotta give N dot permit, so those might take a little bit of time to get, but that's, that's part of the reason why we put the final design proposal in your packet for tonight for consideration, because we're at, you know, January thirteenth, it's gonna be January fourteenth right now. So the earlier we get started on the final design, the earlier we can complete the final design, and if the permits fall into place, the earlier we can get bids out, and then the more of the construction season we'll have to build the project. So, you know, the final plat obviously isn't approved yet, I mean, that's gonna happen at your next meeting, assuming everything goes well, the public hearing next week. So, you know, you could table authorization on the final design until your February meeting, if you want to go through the, you know, the approval of the plat first. However, you know, if you're comfortable, that's why we wanted to give you the opportunity to authorize the final design tonight, if you're comfortable, because then we can get, you know, four weeks more of the design season here in January, we're not sitting and waiting until, you know, February tenth before we can start the design, so. The fee we've estimated for the final design is a hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars, which Derek said, that does include that nine thousand dollar allowance for the electrical engineering, so depending on how the final approach to the electric works out, that, that number for the electric may either go up somewhere, hopefully will go down, or even be removed.
Should also point out too, when we were developing the early cost estimate for that project, we had included, you know, a certain dollar amount for engineering, the number that's within the proposals, within that amount, so effectively what it means, it's been budgeted for previously, and there's no, there's no significant changes, it's just us requesting the next step.
And we can't technically do the design unless we're authorized by you to do so.
Well, looking back at it from the planning commission end of it, I haven't heard of anything that draws a fight of any sort, although I'm kind of looking at it that we're overriding them, you know.
Well, you'll have the public hearing next week, so you'll probably hear some.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I, I'd like to move forward, I'm speaking for myself, I'd like to move forward, but I do believe we should give the opportunity to the planning commission. That's my opinion, so you guys are the ones that make the decision.
So if we wait, that could delay the bids another month?
Yeah, I mean, it's just a matter of when we start the, the actual final design work, there's still, you know, out of that original proposal that was authorized for you guys several months ago for the planning, we still got room in that to complete, you know, the planning commission meeting, and then come back to you guys at the next meeting. So, we would really, you know, even if the authorization occurred tonight, we're not actually gonna start on any of this until we get that final approval.
If we authorize it tonight, how much of it is set in stone for a second? I mean, is it, well, you said yes at this date, so this is the.
If there's some, if there's some type of issue with getting approval from the planning commission, it's not like we're gonna do the extra work, we're just, you know, working out.
Yeah, and it's not set in stone, I mean, if, if the planning commission said, well, we want to tweak the dimension on this lot and change it a little bit, make adjustments, we could certainly incorporate those adjustments into the final design work. And keep in mind, we've got a lot of the final design work that's off, that's outside the parcel, because we've gotta bring those utility extensions across, so, I mean, there's a lot of design work we can do, so we wouldn't really be overriding the planning commission, we'd just be, we'd be getting a head start on the final design, knowing the general parameters of what they'll design up, so we can.
And certain stuff that we know is gonna happen this way.
Yep, and then if in the process of approving the final plat, there's some minor adjustments or tweaks made, then those, those adjustments will be reflected accordingly in the final design.
And the project isn't ultimately approved until you go to bids, and you, you know, get the bids, and then the council accepts a bid, better to do the actual project, so it's not really approved until you get to the, kind of the end of, you know, the process, so, not that this isn't gonna become a fairly, you know, profitable in the next few months, but.
If this was approved tonight, could it be stated, attorney, upon the approval of the planning commission?
Yeah, I don't see this in my, I can't.
I mean, I don't wanna underwrite those people at all, I just don't wanna jump ahead of them.
No, that makes sense, I understand, yes, you could do that.
Bosses, what do you think?
Well, I think we should proceed, as long as there's flexibility with the planning commission.
I agree. Don't worry.
Hey, we're at here, okay, update on the business, approve the proposal for final design services upon the approval of Kenyon, or the, I'm sorry.
Planning commission.
I'm sorry, planning commission. All in favor, is that okay with you guys, say it that way?
Do we have, do we have a motion?
No.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion then, if that's the way it is, since I stated it, we'll need a second then.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made, and second, the approved proposal for final design and services on the Kenyon Business Park, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, also, look forward to that public hearing next Tuesday, and the actions of the planning commission, and hopefully, I know at least one or two of you will be at the meeting, but yeah, hopefully we see some.
Well, that's why, I just can't see going ahead with that.
No, well, essentially, what we're doing is we're, maybe fast tracking, we're trying to do the, we're trying to keep things going kind of concurrently and simultaneously, I mean, we wanna keep the design going while we're still finishing that planning process, you know, and there's been discussions with the EDA and the council and staff all along, so, you know, because that's saving a month on the bids, if the permits fall into place, we save a month on the bids, you know, if that can save you a few percent on the construction with this size of project, and that could be tens of thousands of dollars you could potentially save on the bids, you know, we can meet out there in the earlier time, or when the prices are a little more competitive, so, and gives us that much more time for the contractor to build, you know, gives them that much more time in the season, so we've got a full season to do the work. So, thank you. The final update is the wastewater, the NPDES permit, as you know, this is your, we've talked about this before, which is, the background again, is because you own and operate your own wastewater disposal system and treatment system, you are required to have that permitted by the PCA, and that permit is on a five-year cycle. Your current permit expires at the end of February of two thousand twenty, and so in the fall, we were working on the documents to get everything into PCA, so they require a new permit application, which was submitted last September, they required a phosphorus management plan, that was done and submitted last fall, and then the final piece was the mercury minimization plan, that was required as part of the permit renewable materials. And we worked with PCA to give us a little more time to get that part completed, because we wanted to get the Second Street sewer lining project done, we wanted to get some tests to see how the results were, to see if we had some positive results, so that we can incorporate that into the final report to the PCA. And we are pleased to announce, so was it the last four tests we've taken now, since the supply's been done? Two tests, but they're coming in under the required limit. Your new permit in two thousand twenty will have a limit of ten, what is it, nanograms per liter for mercury in the discharge from your plant. And, so we need to be able to show that we can consistently and predictably meet that limit, and so far, the tests taken since the sewer lining has been completed have shown that that is the case. So that mercury minimization report was completed, and is now on file with the PCA, so essentially now PCA is reviewing all the documentation, they're preparing the draft permit that will come back to the city for review and approval, and we expect that sometime by the end of February, because as we said, your, your current permit expires at the end of February. So, everything is on track, we don't anticipate, at least we have not heard anything from PCA staff about major concerns, or any reason to suspect that the new permit won't be granted in the typical time. or any reason to suspect that the new permit won't be granted in, in the typical timeframe. So I think right now, the materials are in, we're just, we're just waiting to hear back from them. So no action required by the city council at this point on, on that.
Thank you for the update.
Derek, anything else on, that we needed to go over today?
Nope, I think that's it.
All right, yeah, well, so the next upcoming events will be the planning commission next Tuesday, that's six P M.
Yes.
Correct, with the public hearing on the Business Park plan. And then next Thursday, at, I believe that meeting is five?
Yes.
Thursday night is in your.
Yeah, for the.
Five to seven on Thursday.
Oh, yeah, five to seven.
Yeah, five to seven P M for Red Wing. So those will be the next activities coming up. Any other questions on any of the activity, any engineering activities in the city?
I have one question.
Sure.
H P C on the Business Park, there's a right turn lane?
Yes.
I don't remember that was ever brought up. I'm glad it is, but is that a done deal?
There's warrants that we anticipate that if you don't meet them at the time Business Park opens, they'll be met shortly after. So it's just, it's, it's more a question of not really, if a turn lane will be required, it's more a question of when.
Okay.
And so it's, it's better off, we just build it as part of this first project, we'll get better prices. Rather than do the project and come back at a later date and add on that turn lane, it's a.
I, I will point out that some of the early figures, sometimes we didn't draw the turn lane in, but it has been budgeted for, intended, you know, the, the work that was required to build that turn lane. We anticipated that that was going to be needed from early stage.
I remember you can, as you're coming from the east, you crest the hill. And so if you had a, a large truck, you know, because that's going to be an industrial park or it could be industrial uses in there. If you had a large truck that was slowed down, waiting to make a right-hand turn in there, somebody could come over that hill and, and not have sufficient sight distance or stopping distance. So that's why that right turn is especially critical, that right turn lane, to get those, that turn vehicle out of the, the through lane of traffic so that those people have a straight shot when they come over here.
Anything else? Anybody? Okay, we'll move on to legal, and we can do some of these all at the same time.
Yeah, the appointments and everything are all one motion.
I do have a question, let's say on particular, on the Historic Preservation Committee. And Dan, I'm asking you this particular part of it, and then I also need, there's still some vacancies in that. My question is, would citizens be allowed outside of the city, of Kenyon? Let's say in the townships or the county itself, being able to participate in that, be on the board?
So one thing that the H P C did talk about at their meeting tonight was, I think we need to look at amending that ordinance to make that board smaller, because I think having a seven-member district preservation board in a city of nineteen hundred people is not realistic. And I think it's a constant thing, you know, since I've been here and I think before, to keep that filled with people. So I think we are going to come back in February with ordinance, Scott, I guess, we talked about that, to reduce that, and actually what we talked about today was just three people. Because the H P C is, you know, their scope of what they do is somewhat limited. They meet quarterly, it's not, you know, a, a real super active commission. So it, I think, would be a good idea to consider, for the council to consider reducing the size of that board.
The other thing is, we have, we, we have a Historical Preservation Commission, and we also have a Historical Society, which has, which has a board. Yeah, so we have like, I don't know, nine or ten members on the Historical Society Board, which meets usually monthly down at the Gunderson House. That includes people both in-town and, because it's the Kenyon area Historical Society. So we have people who live in Holden Township and Laomingo Township maybe, and, you know, so we have Cherry Grove Township, so we have people on that committee. So when we talked about this tonight, I, I, I agree with, with Mark that this, this board does not have to be so big, because we have, you know, the other board that's, that is kind of working hand in glove here. So I think those, the three vacancies there, I think those are three easy positions we can just shave off the top and then just reduce the size of that committee. And the bulk of the work that's being done is being done by the Historical Society Board, you know.
That's from the area.
Yes, yeah, and that's the Kenyon area Historical Society. So there, so this commission is, I don't, I've been on both of them. I'm on the Historical Society Board, the, this H P C, and on City Council. From my perspective, we just don't need so many people on that H P C. Yeah.
Well, I learned something, I didn't honestly know that it was two separate ones. So that's why I was questioning.
For, for, for a top of our side, this is pretty convenient. It is pretty, yeah, and unnecessary, really, so.
Yeah, and the Historical Society is, you know, independent of the city, it's like a nonprofit.
Yeah.
It's got its own special designation for tax purposes, but, I mean, that's a outside of the city kind of organization. But they work very closely with the Historic Preservation Commission, which is a commissioner board of the city. So we just think that it would be more efficient to have it just be a smaller group. And we think that way we'll be able to keep members on there. We, we also have the director of the Goodview County Historical Society, who is, right now is a member, but I think what I would say if we, if we amend that ordinance that, in the bylaws, that that be more like an ex officio member, so she can still be involved or come to our meetings when she can, but it won't be quite the same. And I mean, I think she can accomplish the same thing of being plugged into what we're doing that way than actually being a voting member. So, but we'll come back and February with that.
Okay, learned something. Okay, we can do an approval on that in one motion under item A, one through six.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion been made, second to approve, all in one motion, item A dash one through six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes pass. Okay, moving on. Resolution twenty, twenty dash oh one, first one in here, establishing license fees and compensation. And we have a packet on that, and that one is.
So there's one thing I do want to just highlight is there, we have the, if you look at the end of that resolution, we have attachment A. And we have the sanitary and storm sewer fee increase that was talked about as part of that Red Wing project. Approximately, well, for storm sewers, fifteen percent. Sanitary. Is three percent increase. So they're, they're pretty small increases, but that's needed, it's going to be needed to help us support that debt when we do the Red Wing project, because the Red Wing project, that debt will be paid for out of several different pots of money, you know, to simplify it, tax, revenue, and then user fees in, you know, storm sewer, water, and water's camu, so that's not the council, but, and then sanitary sewer. So, you know, there's going to basically be, you had done assessments, so there's going to be four pots of money that that's paid out of, if it moves ahead in the current form. So we are requesting these increases in those two utility fees to help us be able to, you know, keep that fund of water, keep it in the black over the next ten to fifteen years that that's, well, probably fifteen years that that's paid back. So anyway, so those are reflected in attachment A. So the stormwater base fee would go from, the residential fee would go from three fifty a month to four dollars and three cents a month. And then the sanitary would go from four thirty-two a month to four forty-five a month. Now, those numbers you don't have, I can, I saw if anybody wants that, but I'm just saying that's what the rates are right now. And the new rates are reflected in the resolution, attachment A there. So there's, so they're, they're not big, big increases or anything, but I just want to point those out that that's, we felt that would be the best way to do that would be, I mean, it's part of the fee resolution. So I don't know if there's any questions on, on that specifically, but other than that, there really is no, there's no other increases. We did more last year and two years before that, kind of going through the fee structure and increasing some of the fees. So we, we haven't, we're not proposing to increase, you know, the, the regular fees that are listed in the resolution.
They're going to make a ton of money on the gold dirt ones.
Yeah, yeah, we probably should increase that, but, no, we don't want to do that.
Okay.
We said a lot of people get those, yeah.
What's that?
A lot of people get those from us, the gold carpet ones.
Okay, I would move we approve resolution twenty, twenty dash one.
All seconded.
Okay, motion been made, second, to approve resolution twenty, twenty dash oh one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes pass. Got that one's up. Under C and D, then we go into C, the B F W, and your permits. And recycling, do these all separate?
Yeah, those are all approved. So now you have Kennedy and Gravens, twenty twenty, now Kennedy increased. Or no, I'm sorry.
We didn't do a separate motion yet on C through D and G.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, you need a motion on C.
So you have to do that, yeah.
Do they all need to be separate motions?
No, just together, two, now for all of them, they have to be together.
I will move approval of items C through G. Under the legal section eight of the agenda.
All seconded.
Okay, motion been made, and second, to approve all, in one motion, item C dash two G. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes pass. Okay, now we get into the big dollar ones. And I'm all sitting here waiting to hear about it. So, you have anything to say?
Other than those are the same rates and charging everybody, like Weston, Nurse Strand, Purple, everybody else. So it's the same, same increase I'm doing for it.
Well, I've certainly been happy with you, and I will harass you from a couple of years back. How was the three fifty in the north or something like that?
No, I didn't have the engineer rates, but.
That was a good day, so. Okay, we need a motion on that, which I'm going to make motion two. Kennedy and Gravens, twenty twenty rates for legal services.
Second.
Okay, motion been made, second, for Kennedy and Gravens, twenty twenty rates for legal services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes pass. Get your vote, go to the room, whether it's a little bit.
Dark here.
I'm glad I get to rest.
It only happens once a year.
So, okay, this next one, I don't know what to tell you about, but Mark, I think you should take this one.
Well, this is a letter that we would like to send to MediaCom to get them to, basically, you know, put them on notice that, it says in the contract, the franchise agreement for cable, that TV, that they're supposed to upgrade our cable access equipment. And so according to the contract, which they haven't replaced this equipment yet, the next step, as Scott can probably explain this, is going to be to send them a notice of violation letter.
Yeah, and what it does is essentially under the franchise agreement, takes it to the next level, because they've not responded. This allows us to essentially move to the next level and recoup our costs through other means and fix it ourselves, if ultimately that's what has to happen. I doubt that's what will happen, but why it's taken this long, I don't know. Sometimes you have to rattle cages, and that's what's going to happen right here. But Bob Ross of my office has done this numerous times for other communities, he's done it for us before as well here in Kenyon. So this is a fairly standard letter, and we just ask you to approve that so it can be sent over.
This, this isn't an outlandish request here. I mean, like, this is like part of their, their job, like, I mean.
Well, that's why it's kind of silly, I know Mark had communications with Bob, but it's, I don't know why this hasn't happened. Because Bob called and they said they were going to do it, and that's, that's months ago.
So, yeah, wow, yeah, put their feet to the fire, that, that's just ridiculous. You know, people pay for, people pay for the service, and then they're, they're so willing to accept the payment and not provide the service that, that can't stand.
Yeah, this is the second city I've had with MediaCom, and it's the same, the same process that I went through in both cities, and it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
It's, I just don't get it, but it's got to keep, keep plugging away at it. Unless we have a contract on it, so our franchise agreement.
Okay, are you, somebody going to make the motion on that?
What, what would you like the motion to be, though?
Motion direct staff and city attorney to forward the attached letter to MediaCom and notify.
That sounds good, I will move that.
All seconded.
Okay, oh, motion has been made, second, I'll just send a notice of violation, franchise violation. Beta certified, mail to MediaCom, and so I'll, I'll see you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes win. Okay, old business. And I believe that will be by Michelle, library director.
Good evening, I'm here just to give you a quick update on our library carpet and paint project. As you can see, we're no longer in here, so things have progressed. We're back over in our, our actual main library, everything looks wonderful, super happy with how things turned out. Public response has been very positive. We still have our storage container out back here. Today we brought in the rest of the shelving, so all the shelving is up. Still have some boxes in there, but I'm hoping that we'll have that container emptied and everything back into the library by the end of this week, at least the boxes, not everything, but away exactly where it needs to go. But everything went really smoothly, I'm very impressed. There, we didn't have any major issues. I need to say thank you to Public Works for helping us move a lot of that shelving and books in and out from the storage container, and moving shelving from our temporary location in here, where we were set up for about three weeks. It looks great, if you get the chance to come in and check it out, I, I encourage you to. So, do you have any other questions for me?
Just thank you for doing that. I mean, it's a huge effort and something that will, it'll, that, that part of the building should be good for years to come now.
I will be retired before we do again. Or you're going to have to hire movers, because I'm not doing it again.
But anyway, it was a huge effort, and on behalf of the, the city, I'd just thank you for, for taking on that. It was, it'd be so easy to just let it, let it slide, so.
Yeah, we had a few spots that were starting to deteriorate, and, you know, we want to make sure that our library is, the physical appearance, you know, represents what we're also providing as services, you know, keep that at the same level. And so I think it is very welcoming, it's much warmer in there now. I'll meet with the library board next week, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we will maybe do some kind of a, another like grand opening, some kind of, you know, something in the evening to do a little open house of some sort, would be kind of fun. Get the public in and check it out. We've got some ideas for some new designs, for artwork on our walls. So it's, we're, we're. beginning to look at some other, some other options for decorating as well, getting local memorabilia and historical art apps, so hopefully we'll be able to fundraise to get some like shadow boxes and things to put some, I don't know, so, we are heading in the right direction, this has been a really good experience, I'm glad that, I thought I want to thank you for making this happen financially, and yeah, it looks great, so...
Looks fantastic.
It does look fantastic, it really does. And we did go with the carpet squares, so hopefully if there is any issues, we can just pop out squares and replace as needed, we have about two bundles, so this should really last at least twenty, about thirty years, if the last carpet lasted, you know, twenty years, we can make it last, so...
And I would say the, uh, the weather forecast is probably your incentive to give the rest of those boxes, and by the end we'll be...
Yes, I would say, um...
Sub-zero.
Yes, I'm glad that we actually did it this time of year, it actually turned out really well, it is a slower time of year for us, right after, or during the holidays, we're starting to pick back up now, um, but it would have been so incredibly hot in the storage container, moving things in and out, so it's been actually really, we, we've had a very hot experience with everything, things have gone very, um, well, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle, and I will say this here, I did expect gray hair and split fingernails and the whole works, and when I walked in earlier this week, I guess it was Monday, it looked great, really.
It is, it turned out great, there were some tense moments, I'm not going to lie, and then sugar balls things come from me, but we, uh, we managed, we managed, so it turned out great. All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, um, next one, update on Good Hugh County solid waste ordinance with County Commissioner Brad, as it...
Ernie. Yep. Before we start in that, I just wanted to touch a little bit about some county concerns with business park and some of the water. We've had water issues there for many, many years, and it would really be nice to get those fixed while we're doing this. I think we're meeting with you next week, I think, considering...
Yeah, we're at twenty-seven.
So, I just think there's residents there that have had problems for a long time, and the business park is going to be dumping more water there, you know, even though it's going to be held in the pond, but once it's gone, it's coming down that way, so, they're just, it's just some concerns from the county as far as the road, you know, keeping that good, and, and making sure the residents get taken care of, so, just to let you know that's, that's on our radar, as far as, you know, our permitting and stuff, so... Let's hopefully we can come up with some solutions for that.
Yep.
Um, solid waste, um, they made a mistake when they did their whole plan last year, they didn't have the required announcements to the public and the unions, and, so, they have to start the whole process over again. So, there's a public hearing again coming up, um, on this issue, we all know that it's going to cost us over in this area a lot more money than it's going to cost anybody else in the county for trash sales, um, which is very unfair, in my opinion. We went through a lot, a lot of things last year trying to stop it, and I think the newest elected board member is in favor of it, so I think we're, we may be, um, you know, destined to have it, I'm afraid. Um, I would suggest maybe, and I'll send your, your, uh, concerns and stuff to the county again, and I don't know what you're thinking, um, you know, I don't know if you've heard anything from your hall, or what you think so costs you more, or, you know, and another, you know, side note of that too, is recycling, so like one mango got their bid, they were recycling on twelve thousand. So, that's something we have to tackle with the county, I believe, and, and, you know, how to handle that, and I just, everybody gets the trash, but it's all in there and they can sort it, because they're going to be sorting it out anyway, so why bother, you know? It's kind, it's just, um, it's really, it's really not a good deal for us out here. I question even the, you know, why we're doing it, because it's going to cost, you know, seventeen million dollars in extra fees over the twenty-year contract for the residents. And the cost to clean the landfills is estimated at fourteen million or something, you know, couldn't be more than what's in there, so, you don't know, you know, I guess I've always been opposed to it because of that reason, I just think it's not an equitable agreement for all of the county. Much more to say, well, I pounded it pretty hard last year, and, um, I've been trying to think of some, some ways to work on it, this year I've been talking to the new commissioner, you know, and just explaining to her, and, you know, so she understands what the effects are of this area. It would be nice to get some sort of concessions or something for us out here, more different activity structures, building a mileage, or, but, um, you know, as the Red Wing, Rick Moskowitz, the Red Wing, Red Wing Works guy, told me that everybody wants to bring trash to Red Wing, so he doesn't really even need our trash anymore. I said, that's good, we will bring it then, but they have to have it to get, you know, to get the ordinance, because of the way that, there was a statute written that said that, if we did a, all our trash in Good Hugh County, and so, take it from its own source to be processed, then we can get the landfill as closed into the closed landfill program, so that gets the liability of the leaks and stuff away from the county. So, I mean, that part's a good idea, we all pay that, if you look at your bill, you'll see like nine percent tax on your, on your residential, and I think it's seventeen on your businesses, solid waste tax, and that goes to clean up landfills, so, we pay that all the time, we pay, I think the figure was we paid fourteen million into that, since this has, uh, since this has been, since it's inception, I guess, so, we've already paid a lot of money into that fund, and never used it. So I think that's a big concern, I, I just, and if you guys got suggestions, you know, ideas on, on ways to maybe curtail it or make it more equitable, that would be helpful. Sorry, I'm not too optimistic, kind of, I've been through it, and I think we're, you know, odds are pretty good that we're going to end up with, with an agreement without any, any of the influence.
So there, there's nothing in there now to limit how much they can raise it per year, or anything like that?
There's, uh, it's government inflation plus a max of two and a half percent.
Two and a half plus the inflation?
Plus the government inflation, which generally runs around three percent.
Yeah.
So the highest, they, you know, generally it'd be, you know, five, you figure five percent is probably pretty good, you know, so, you know, as, as entities like that, you know, kept the rates down over the years, you know, or has government not raised prices over the years on things?
Yeah.
Not a great track record, so, I think you're going to see, you're going to see price increases.
In twenty years, it could, it could double?
It could double in twenty years.
Wow.
You'd be paying, you know, two hundred and twenty dollars a ton, you know, you know, we do a lot.
Commissioner, I got a question for you on that, I've, I've heard, and I want to find out if I missed a vote somewhere, was there, from here, the transfer, the hauling is not the same as if you're in Red Wing? I thought that was going to at one time be county by...
It's the same price.
Everybody gets the same price?
Correct.
From way over here on the county road?
Yes.
Or if you're right next to the dump?
Well, it's a hundred and eighty dollars a ton, whether you're right next door or you're in Kenyon.
That they go through?
Yeah.
Okay, what about outside the county? I understood that there's some, um, coming in from outside of the county, is that true?
That is true.
Is that good or bad?